Let's go ahead and get started. And when Alice shows up, she'll show up. Because it's kind of toasty. Everybody ready? Yes. All right, I would like to welcome everybody to the Norwood City Schools Board of Education meeting for Thursday, June 25th, 2020. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bi-monthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we fully discuss our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board members, we encourage you to attend, watch, and listen to our committee discussion, which results in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for everyone's view. All of our meetings are public, and visitors are welcome. Ms. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
Ms. Fowler.
Present.
Mrs. Raiver.
Present.
Mrs. Rarica.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on our agenda is the adoption of tonight's agenda. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any changes that need to be made to the agenda? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Mrs. Raiver.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We went ahead and got started because it's a little warm in here, and we don't want to keep people here forever.
Do not worry.
All right, perfect. Next on our agenda item is 1.05, which, and 1.06, which is the minutes from our regular meeting on May 21st, and then the minutes from our committee meeting on June 16th. I would like to make a motion that we pass both minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Mrs. Raiver.
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Next on our agenda is item 2.01, which is the results of our parent survey. So we have Chris Chesson and Mrs. Cole that's going to present the survey, and I believe this is going to show up on the screen behind me, so I am going to move to another table so I can watch the presentation.
Am I good here, Christine? Are they going to zoom in on that?
I think they'll be fine. They'll zoom in.
Okay.
They'll zoom right in.
Okay. You want me to start? Okay. So we want to thank everyone that participated.
We unblocked your microphone, just so that way you can make sure the folks that can hear you there.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. So just to get started, we want to thank everyone that participated in the survey. We appreciate your time and feedback. We found your feedback and your insights very helpful for us, so we appreciate that. We had 410 parents complete the survey, and we had even participation among the schools as well as the grade levels. So I'm not going to go too in-depth in that tonight. So what you're going to see overall is just how those 410 people averaged. I'll make a few comments along the way about the different schools or grades, but for the most part, they were consistent. Several of you commented that you hoped we would share the results, so here you go. This is what we're doing. This part of the meeting is just meant to communicate the results. What we say today is not necessarily what will happen when it comes time to go back to school. We have to be flexible based on the CDC guidelines, the Ohio Department of Health, Governor Dewine, and the Ohio Department of Education. So there is a district reentry team, and the Board of Education will be involved with those discussions as well. So again, this is just to recap the survey results. Okay, so to get started, the first question was just very general, and we asked how you felt about your children returning to school in the fall. Thirty-seven percent of you say you are completely comfortable now. Forty-seven percent say you're comfortable with some safety measures that will be implemented, and 16% of you say you will not be comfortable regardless of the safety measures. So the next several slides will show how necessary parents felt that safety measures were. So in short, just to kind of summarize for everybody, the most important safety measures were hand washing as well as temperature checks. So the first graph talks about face masks, so this asks how important you think it is that face masks are worn by students. And I'm just going to highlight two numbers on each of these. There was a necessary, there was necessary, there was nice to have but not necessary, there was not needed, and there was I'm not sure. Excuse me. So on each of these, I'm going to highlight the necessary and the not needed. So face masks for students, 28% felt it was necessary; 41% felt that face masks for students were not needed. And I will also point out that this was one of the top two that parents said were not The next one was face masks worn by teachers and staff. Thirty-one percent felt necessary; 31% felt not needed. This one talks about the hallways being one-way only. Twenty-five percent of you felt that was necessary; 40% said this was not needed. This, again, along with masks for students, were the top two things that the parents told us were not needed. Teachers and staff participating in temperature checks, 68% said that was necessary; 9% felt that is not needed. Oh, students again? I thought we did that one. Never mind. Students, we have 62%, so this is students having their temperature taken. 62% felt that was necessary; 11% not needed. Desks being six feet apart in the classroom, 43% felt that was necessary; 24% said not needed. This is breakfast and lunch being consumed in the classroom, meaning the cafeteria would send the meals to the classroom. Thirty-six percent of our parents felt this was necessary; 31% felt it's not needed. Hand washing breaks throughout the day, 63% said not needed, or, I'm sorry, 63% said this was necessary; 2% said it was not needed.
It's 80, I think it's 83.
It's 83 on that one.
Oh, 83. I'm sorry, I have a typo. I thought that one, okay. Yep, 83, sorry. I have 83 somewhere else. This one. The recess with hand washing after, again, 88% necessary, 2% not needed. Again, sorry for my slip. Just to clarify, the top two were recess with hand washing after, hand washing breaks, so those were 88 and 63%, and then the temperature checks. That was the next most important. All right, so we heard some buzz from parents saying that they wouldn't send their kids to school if face masks were required. So we just wanted to put that question out there to really see if this was going to be a problem, if this is what we have to do to move forward. So we asked how likely you would be to send your kids to school if they have to wear a face mask. Fifty-nine percent of you said you were extremely likely or likely to send your child to school. If we also consider those of you that were in the middle, that number goes from 59% We asked, on the subject of face masks, we asked if parents felt it was reasonable or not to require your own children to wear a face mask while at school. Thirty-four percent of you said yes, this is reasonable; 44% of you said no; and 22% of you said maybe. So this is an example where I hypothesized that the parents of the younger children may feel their students couldn't wear a face mask all day, and maybe the parents of the older kids thought that this was perfectly reasonable. Yet the data did not back my hypothesis. So all grades across the board were kind of mixed in terms of being okay with face masks and not. So then those of you that said no, you didn't think it was reasonable, or those of you that said maybe, we asked a follow-up question and just asked you to help us understand your response. So the reasons were mostly around concerns about wearing a mask, about, you know, breathing in your own carbon dioxide and stuff like that, children fidgeting with it and touching their face even more often than they usually do, maybe the child has some kind of disorder that they just can't wear one, the teachers having to police that situation. So that was, for the most part, what we heard about the concern with face masks. We presented four scenarios and asked which scenario was most ideal for you. There were four options. So 57% of you said you want to see kids in school all day. 6% of you want to see an AM/PM split with Norwood City Schools online learning when the child's not in school. And 26% of you wanted to see half of them going Monday, Tuesday, half of you going Thursday, Friday, with online learning from Norwood City Schools the other times. And 10% of you wanted to be online full-time. Those of you that said, the 57% of you that said you wanted to see the kids in school all day, we asked you a follow-up question and said, if we can't do that, if your kid can't be in school all day, what's the next best scenario? So here, 35% of you preferred an AM/PM split, and this was 233. This was 233 people. So again, 35% AM/PM split, 54% preferred Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday and Friday, and 11% of you would want to be online full-time. We asked a question about childcare. So in the event that we're online in any capacity, meaning just half-days or a few days a week, or even full-time, we wanted to know how this would affect our families in terms of childcare. So 59% of you said that you would not need childcare. 27% said you would need childcare, and that's going to be an issue to secure that. And 13% of you said you would need childcare, but it will not be an issue. Oh, I didn't know we had this in here, sorry. We asked some scenarios as to how likely you would be to send your child to school if we implemented some of these safety procedures. And all of these procedures are things that we've already talked about. So we talked about face masks for students, students' temperatures being taken at the door, eating breakfast and lunch in the classroom, social distancing in the classroom, half-day sessions, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday sessions, and PE inquire classes being outside. So in a nutshell, we just asked, you know, given all these scenarios, how likely would you be to send your child to school? If we do the half-day in-person and half-day online, 53% of you said yes, you would send your child; 21% said no; 26% said I'm not sure. If the child is required to social distance in the classroom, 74% said yes; 13% said no; 13% said I'm not sure. So this is the Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday schedule. Seventy-five percent of you said yes; 10% of you said no; 15% of you said I'm not sure. And this one is PE inquire classes outside. Seventy-nine percent said yes; 8% said no; 13% said I'm not sure. This slide is about communication. We asked how you felt about the communication that you received from the district overall during the last quarter of the last school year. Eighty percent of you said that you felt there was the right amount of communication; 13% said there was not enough; 5% said there was too much; and 1% said you've never received communication. All right, so that's it. Again, I just want to communicate that this was simply the results of the survey. This is by no means decisions that have been made or anything. You guys just stated that you wanted to know what we learned, and that is what we learned. You have probably received the all-call that Mrs. Ronan sent out early this evening, and as she mentioned, Governor Dewine will likely give some guidance at the 2:00 PM press conference on Tuesday. So clearly, that will have to play into what we decide as a district to move forward.
Are we able to have discussion about this at this time? Because I have some questions about it. I never actually received a copy of this survey because I'm not a parent in the district. And as a board member, I feel like I should have received a copy. I was never given a copy. This is the first time I've actually seen the physical questions, and I do have a couple of questions. So the way it was set up, it only let a family enter answers based on, like, one time. So if you had a high schooler and an elementary school student, your answers could have been vastly different, but they were forced to kind of choose between the two pathways that would service their family. So I'm not sure that it was necessarily the best option to only let them fill it out once per household. Thank you. So if there is a way for folks to, or maybe we can do a second round and have an option, if you have multiple children, please put the age group of your child, and let me adjust based on that. They may think their high schooler is perfectly capable of online learning, but maybe they want their preschool to really have that one-on-one interaction. So it could be a disparaging result based on the age of the child in the household.
Can I answer that one real quick before you move on to the next one? So that's possible. That's very possible. Everything is possible.
I know. This is just the first time I've seen it. So I'm like, as a fix, I would like to give parents the opportunity to answer for the uniqueness of their own household.
Yep.
To meet those needs.
Yep. It could have been done, we were just, we did not have the time, and we were trying to.
You did an amazing job.
We were trying to get it out.
This is great.
Now.
I just wish I would have seen it, so I could have addressed that sooner.
Yeah.
I didn't know it was being developed, or like, how it was being developed.
Well, there was a committee that was working on it, and we discussed that, but it was decided that we needed high level now.
Right.
Just to get some direction.
There also were parts where you, there were pretext areas where you could agree. It doesn't change the numbers, but you could say, I have a high schooler, I think they would be okay with this, but I don't think my elementary school kid would, so.
Right, but those results aren't going to be reflected.
I felt two different ways about my kids.
They're not going to be reflected in that general.
Right, I know. Like I said, it's not in the numbers, but it is in the subjective part.
Hold on, people. Hold on. So let's keep this one person speaking at a time, so that a way we have a good discussion. So let's try not to talk over top of each other.
We're good. Nobody's fighting.
No, I'm not saying fighting.
We're passionate. We're energetic, and I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So I did see a really good guideline come out of Oregon that promoted a compromise on the mask situation, because we obviously have families that feel very strongly about masks, some that have no idea, you know, the implications of how healthy they are, you know, lots of different things. They suggested masks during arrival and dismissal, if they're on buses, obviously we don't bus, but during arrival and dismissal, while they're in hallways, and while they're doing small group activity. If they're in the room and they're spread out, they don't have to wear the mask all day. So this could be a really unique compromise that maybe we could throw into a follow-up survey that might suit our needs. Another option, they said, was if they are offering a full day to anybody who wants to take it online, then a lot of students are going to opt for that. And if they do opt for that, it's going to open up several desk spots in classrooms to allow for a full-day-in-classroom option to also take place simultaneously. Parents can always make the opportunity to say, well, by fall quarter, I'm ready to send my kid back for winter. You know, that kind of thing. So if we offer both full-day options, our class sizes will drop tremendously and allow for even more social distancing. We are very lucky as a district to have a lot more square footage per student than most schools in Hamilton County, so we're already ahead of that curve, which is wonderful. And if we offer a full day online to students, for anybody that wants to take it, then they can compromise for their own family situation, their dynamic, can send one high schooler here, they can send their other high schooler, you know, from home, whatever works best for them. We don't have to lock down our families in one or the other scenario when we could easily offer both and accommodate plenty of spacing to all of our students. And also, we have a giant auditorium. Choir doesn't need to be outside. It can be in the auditorium when it gets colder. We have a giant gym, we're in it. So limiting that question to say, well, we can have these things outside, well, we've got most of our students during cold weather and inclement weather, so where are we going to put them? We have a huge auditorium, we can space out all the kids in any type of musical setting. They can practice more on the stage for band, tons of room, tons of options. I don't, I felt that some of the questions might have been limiting, and some of the parents may have been felt to choose a certain way based on the question, not necessarily thinking that we have the space to accommodate these situations. So just a couple of things to consider for maybe a follow-up survey. That's all.
All right, does anybody else want to enter?
I just had one comment. So when we were looking at the ones that said, like, the likelihood that I would send my kid if they have to wear a mask or if they have to do that. So then, is that, I can't remember what the percentage was at the beginning, that you said wouldn't be comfortable no matter what, right?
Mm-hmm. It was 16% at the very beginning.
So then when we're seeing it, and it's saying, like, you know, I would be okay sending my kid if it was, if masks were required, are then people saying, no, I wouldn't be okay, because they're not okay no matter what? Does that make sense?
Right. It was just structured weird to me, because they may be thinking, like, well, they have to wear them all day, every day, no matter what, and this could be a compromise of wear it when you're in public spaces, wear it to and from school. Also, something to keep in mind with temperature checks, one of the local school systems that is currently evaluating the cost to implement those thermal readers is extremely expensive, and the time per student to accommodate a three-to-seven-second-per-student-temperature check could take them upwards of an hour just to get students into the building physically. So potentially offering each teacher a thermal device to check their classrooms, so once they arrive in the classroom, the students would still have their masks on, and the teacher could individually check their classroom, might be a really good time saver option because some of the schools coming forward are saying, this is going to take an hour if we try to keep the kids out of the building and check them individually as they come in the door.
Yeah, I think we've already addressed that.
That has already been addressed.
They've been ordered.
Because of the size of our district, we're able to secure.
Smaller units.
Well, you know, handheld units.
Right.
Right? One for each teacher or each staff member in the district, so we can cut down on that time, and it's not going to be a clog.
It just wasn't done in, mentioned in the survey.
But that wasn't part of the survey.
Right, but I'm saying, some parents weren't even okay with the temperature check, so they may have thought, my kid's going to get stuck out in the cold all day while we're waiting in a line to get in the building. So they may not have been aware of that process. So I'm just making sure we have vocalized that process to parents, so they're aware of what it looks like.
Right.
There's a lot of misinformation online, and a lot of districts are doing a lot of different things.
Right.
So I want to make sure that we're clear with how this would affect our district specifically.
Well, 84%, so they would take, they would, 84%, the question was, my student's temperature would be taken at the door, and 84% were fine with that. But we do have the capability to do it in the classroom.
Yes, that makes it a lot quicker if every homeroom teacher takes the child's temperature every morning. When we saw those massive amount, and when 84% of your customers say they want temperature taken, that's when we order infrared thermometers for all of our staff members.
And I want to go back to Sally's point, too, about the 16% at the beginning not being comfortable sending their child to school. So that was very intentionally asked first, and I discussed that with the committee. I said, I want to throw a question out there to ask people how they feel right now, today, the very first question, how do you feel about this? Before we start putting all these other things in their mind with all these other questions. So you could see it was like, kind of, 16% off the bat, and then as we continued to move throughout the survey, you know, when it got to, well, what do you want to do next year, only 11% were online. And then, you see what I'm saying? So the number kind of diminished as they.
So that's what I was wondering. So the question is, would you send your kid to school if masks are required? And it was, you know, say, like, 10 or 11% said, no, I wouldn't send, you know, on that last one. But if 16% had already said that they weren't comfortable no matter what, like, so those people were still answering that question, correct?
Yeah.
So I'm saying, if you were saying, I'm not comfortable sending my kid no matter what, then when you get to the question about, I would send my kid if masks are required, you're still going to answer no, because you already said you're not comfortable no matter what. So it just seems like the amount of people who might be okay with it might even be higher because some people are saying, no, no matter what you do. And it's not no because I don't want my kid to wear a mask, it's just no because I want my kid to do online learning.
Right.
So, yes, I am one of those parents. That was the first question, and my answer was no, not because I have any problem with masks on my children, which I said later in the survey, but my stance is I'm not sending my kids to school. They are not going in buildings.
So you answered no on all of those questions at the end?
I answered no on all of them because I'm like, no, my kids are doing online. We're not going in there. This pandemic is not slowing down, it's only getting worse. And even when I took the thing, we hadn't been starting getting worse, but I knew it would be. I knew second wave was coming, and I'm like, psh, we are not going in school buildings. So I answered no to all those, not because I have any problems with any of those things, I want all those things, but because I don't want to send my kids. And for a big reason of, there are lots of people that have, like Amber was saying, lots of people have to send their kids, they don't have a choice. And if I keep my kids home, that leaves more space for them.
So I think one thing to keep in mind with this is that this was a high-level survey, just to kind of gauge the temperature of the community right now. We still have to wait for the guidelines from the governor, which has now been pushed back to next Tuesday, and then whatever other, there's like five different entities that could potentially impact what we do as a district. And so all of that has to come together, and then we have to sit down and figure out what the path is forward after that. So, you know, having 410 families respond, I mean, keep in mind, you know, 1,800 kids in the district, so if you average two kids per family, you know, we had a really good response rate for this. And then almost every staff member responded to the survey, which was fantastic. So.
Is that a separate survey from this one? Is this the parents only, or are they lumped in with that one?
This was the parents only, the staff was separate. The staff was similar where it made sense, but we asked the staff more open-ended questions. What did you, what worked about distance learning, what didn't work, what improvements would you like to see? We asked the staff way more open-ended questions.
Okay.
But, you know, as terms of the safety precautions and things like that, and it was the same. It's in line with what parents are thinking, which is great news.
Yeah, I've been, whenever parents ask me, because everything's out, I'm like, we're not going to make a decision until we get closer to, because this week is going to look a lot different than four weeks from now.
Yeah.
It just is. So I don't want to nail anything down, which is why I hope that we can maybe tweak and send out a secondary round of survey closer to that decision-making process, which is why I'm like, this is a wonderful job. I just want to give parents the opportunity to have a voice for each of their children as an option, so that they can be more specific in their needs.
Yep, makes sense. And like I said, we could have done it, it's just we just didn't take the time. We wanted to get it turned around quickly, so we had some direction.
No, I get it.
But that's absolutely doable.
All right, any other discussion about the survey? So if parents or members of the community have questions about the survey, you know, feel free to reach out to any one of us, so that we can field those and make sure that we respond back to everybody. All right, let's move on to the third item in our agenda, which is the education committee report. Mrs. Rarica.
Okay, we have our, there's not a.
Yeah, Alice, that is the agreement. Remember CenterPoint presented at the last meeting.
There it is, I see it now.
This is the MOU signing for the partnership.
The memorandum of understanding from CenterPoint Health. The intent of this agreement is to create a community partnership before, between Norwood City Schools and CPH for the use of Norwood City Schools' classrooms and labs and equipment and facilities of Norwood City Schools to create a school-based health center, which is very exciting, that is available for Norwood City Schools' students, faculty members, and the community at large. This agreement should not be deemed to be created in independent contractor, agency, employment, or other relationship between the parties. I think this is very exciting.
It is. And timely. I'd like to motion. Accept this MOU, because it's fantastic.
So we have a motion to accept the MOU? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? So we discussed this at length during the committee meeting, and we had a presentation by the good folks at CenterPoint. So I just want to reiterate here that this is a partnership, so both parties have skin in the game. So both parties have skin in the game. So our skin in the game is going to be some construction transformation of the space here in the high school where the nurses' office is. However, I just want to reiterate that the dollars that that's going to cost is not coming out of our general fund and it's not coming out of the classroom. So we have been given, we've been given grants for mental health and mental well-being. And so those dollars are eligible for this purpose. So this is basically, you know, it's money that we're going to spend, but it's money that we're getting from grants. And so I think this is great for the community, this is great for our taxpayers, it's great for our school district. So I think this really puts us into a different space. So I'm in total support of this. Any other comments?
It'll also help us with attendance. You're not going to have to leave, take your child out of the building to go to, go get your kid their flu shot at the doctor's office for a half a day. You can come and do their sports physicals right here. You don't have to try to get across town to some doctor's office and hope they can see you on time. It's going to be a lot more beneficial for families to have this right in their backyard to come and take advantage of and use it for their students. So I've been, we've been trying to get it for a couple of years, doing a partnership like this, and this is just fantastic. It's a great time since we're already doing construction in the building.
Yep. Any other comments?
Let's say it again because it's just so great. We're not using school money from classrooms. It's a grant, it's special money. Thank you for saying it. Let's end with that too, just so people are clear on it.
All right, wonderful. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Hatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rerica?
Yes.
All right, so we're going to have a health center here in the high school.
And they have mentioned, even though they will not be finished with construction until the middle of the year, they could do some telehealth in the fall. So that would be very helpful if we, you know, if we have a lot of sick children in the fall.
Do they feature a MyChart type situation so families can go online and set up an account for their children?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out.
That would be great, so we can set up for telehealth services and get families set up with a link that they can go on and get their children registered for that.
And that will be our responsibility is advertising and making sure that parents do sign up because they do have to obviously have permission before they see any child. So we will add that to the final forms, back-to-school packet.
Now, I would like to clarify, this doesn't take over our regular school nurse. If a student is sick, they can go down anytime. It's not going to cost a parent money like a doctor's appointment type situation. There will still be a school nurse-type facility available for students in that space. However, there's also going to be the doctor's office side component that will service others' needs as well.
Exactly.
And dental, yes, yes, thank you, and dental. So I just want to make sure folks don't think that their children's nurse's office is just being gotten rid of, so.
All right, next item?
The next item is our board retreat. And Amber, can you tell us a little bit?
So we have been discussing bringing in equitable training for the board and some of our administrative staff. I sent you guys a presentation proposal from Rico Rice, who is an equity trainer. We've also reached out to the Hamilton County ESC as well. Unfortunately, the timing didn't quite work out with getting information back in a timely manner to have HESC come in and do that this summer. I would really like the opportunity to move forward with this training like we had originally planned to do this summer with Rico Rice's proposal. We can always supplement back with HESC later. I'm sure both trainers have a specific skill set and would be beneficial to us in many ways to have both of them, I have no doubt in my mind. I think that the resources that he is offering are going to be very beneficial to this board and cause us to have some really good conversation to make us think equitably when we are making policies and moving forward as a board. So it's not just about training our teachers, but if we aren't also doing that training, then we are doing a disservice to this district. So I think it is important to move forward this summer with this training as our retreat option. We can start to discuss dates and I would just like to move forward with that.
So did you say that Hamilton County can't come do a training for us this summer?
I believe that the trainer that we reached out to, she had been out of town. It was more of a timing issue to get her to get something together for us in the timeframe that we needed, just it wasn't quite working out that way. And I think that, given our time constraints for when we would like to do a trainer, we should go forward with the person who has a training scheduled, ready to go and can get us moving on this road. And then, like I said, we can always bring HESC back because they are a partner with Norwood. We can bring them back anytime and we can definitely continue their work with our teachers. I just think this would be a great administrative retreat since that's what we're focusing on in this instance.
All right, so can I get a motion?
I'll motion to approve this.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it. I thought usually since I was the education coordinator...
Any discussion? All right, so for this board retreat, Amber is correct. We did reach out to Hamilton County Educational Service Center. I wanted to look at both proposals and see them side by side. But unfortunately, I also know the timing of, you know, we can't wait forever.
Right.
Right, so we have one proposal sitting in front of us. In that proposal, there are a couple of options.
Yeah, we have a full day and a half-day option.
So what I would like to propose with this is that we go ahead with the half-day option and for the availability of everyone involved, we do that from like a five to nine in the evening.
So is there a reason we can't do a full-day option?
Well, it is pretty pricey. But, you know, I think for...
It is, but you get double the stuff for not double the money.
No, I understand. And so this is why I'm throwing it out there. If the direction of this board says that, you know, we want to do a full day, you know, we may have issues trying to get everybody together. If we do a half-day and do it in the evening, I think we would have a much higher participation rate.
I'm also sure we can do two half-day sessions because he did mention that flexibility. So even if we did want to do a full-day option, we can break that up if we need to. I just think that the material that we're looking at and the conversations that we're about to go into are going to take more than four hours. And I think trying to cut it short is going to do us and our district a disservice.
Okay, that's how you feel about it, yes?
And the money that pays for this is this school board money that is separate that we're using for training anyways?
It is.
We do have a budget for training.
So like, I wasn't able to go to a training in May, so we saved money there. Or we haven't been able to go to trainings like when we go to Columbus or somewhere else because of COVID, so we kind of have extra money for training, right?
Right. So my preference is to do this with, at the half-day option.
Business hours for me are going to be very limited this summer. I can, the evenings would be much easier for me.
Okay.
I'm fine with...
I'm flexible with day, evening, weekend. And Rico also mentioned that he is local here to Cincinnati area. And he's like, normally I do them during the weekdays. He's like, I could do a Saturday if you need it, you know? So I can let him know whatever schedule needs that we have and it would work out. And if we have some extended staff that maybe can only make one of those trainings, you know, we can also have a few people come to a portion of that if they're not able to. But I think it, I think it could be very beneficial to us to give it the time it deserves. And I don't know that half a day is what it deserves.
Okay.
Amber, did I hear you say it might be open to the leadership, the cabinet, instead of just the four of us? Can you handle additional people, another, maybe four or five people?
Well, the goal was, actually, he said we can accommodate up to like 20.
Okay.
So the goal for what we had discussed for this workshop and the pricing was to look at a group of 20, not a group of 10.
So we could invite more people?
So that's also part of that cost as well, it's for a larger group. We would look at the board, our building principals, you know, our curriculum and education directors as well, our counselors, we'd like to really have them on board with this, our AD, because of the role he serves, servicing a lot of students and he's also administrative staff, I'd like him on board with that as well. And then anybody else that we feel might need to come to that type of training. But we've got a couple of slot flexibility there. But pretty much, you know, our curriculum is definitely linked to equity. We need our curriculum director there. Our special needs students are directly impacted by equity. We need somebody representing them there. Our counselors, definitely equity focused when it comes to applying for grants, getting student loans help, getting applications for college help, things like that. There is, there is an equity gap for our students of color, not necessarily feeling that they have the same opportunities moving forward. And I want to make sure that our counselors are aware of that going forward. And I think the training will help them be able to reach out better and service better our students of color.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the board retreat with a proposal from Rico Rice. And there, there are multiple options. So I think what we could do is we can make a secondary motion on this to choose one of the options if we want to do that tonight. And for the sake of timing, I think that would be prudent. So does anybody want to make a secondary motion on this motion?
I'll make the secondary motion as well to either vote for a full day or a half-day.
Well, we have to do one or the other, so...
Your preference is?
Your preference is?
Oh, my preference is full day, obviously.
All right. So we have a secondary motion on the floor for the full-day option. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion, any further discussion on the full-day option? Call the roll?
Mr. Hatton?
No.
What are we voting on? Are we voting on...
We're voting on whether we want full day or half-day.
Oh.
No, we're voting on whether we want full day.
We're voting on whether we want full day. Okay, I wasn't sure if we were voting on the...
It can be broken up into two sessions if we need it to, but it can be a full day, but not necessarily a eight-hour day.
I was going to motion to do two half-days after this, if this doesn't pass.
Well, the motion is for the full day.
The full day can look like however we need it to look, so.
So are you still in that?
So I'm stolen out.
Mrs. Cole?
I would be okay with it. I would vote yes if we, if it's not one full day.
Okay. Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rerica?
Yes.
All right, so the direction of this board is that we have a full-day session that could be either one full day or two half-days. And I think for the sake of timing, it would be preferable if that's done in the evening. And we could have up to 20 people.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And like I said, if we want to split up that group and maybe have, you know, certain staff members come on one of the half-days and certain staff members come on the other half for social distancing, or if they're available to come to both halves, I can speak to Rico this week, find out what that might look like for us and get some dates that he is available to accommodate that. And I can email you guys with those details.
Okay. So now that we've done that, our primary motion is still on the table. So now that we've selected which program option that we want, so now the primary motion is to approve the proposal so we can move forward with this. And there's been a motion and a second and we have discussed any further discussion on this. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rerica?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries, we're going to do a board retreat on equity with Mr. Rice. So that is awesome. And 20 people, right?
Yeah, up to about 20 people.
Up to about 20. So let's fill it up.
I'll fill it up.
Yeah. All right. And this doesn't take away from the work that we're currently doing with the Hamilton County Educational Service Center. And I think next month, possibly, we could have some sort of presentation on that work, maybe?
We, yeah, we'll certainly talk to Catrice or we'll see what we...
Just some update on...
Yeah, and what the teachers are learning about.
Right.
That's a great idea.
How we can support them from our role.
Or it might be wrapped up in our August work.
That would be best, yeah.
I'm okay with that too.
People would be available.
Right, whenever, whenever it works out best.
Yeah, Catrice from the county, she is doing equity as our PD, our first day with the entire staff of Norwood.
Right, she's giving...
She's our keynote, yes, she's our keynote speaker.
Okay.
And that's the beauty of equity training, there's always something more to learn. So I think it'll be a great piece to the puzzle. So thank you, board.
All right. Moving on on our agenda, because I'm getting a little warm. Item number four, personnel superintendent recommendations, superintendent Roger.
Yes, the request is that the board approve two ASME master agreements, ASME 3136 and 3136A. This is a one-year agreement, 1% increase due to the uncertainty of the times. We don't know what our budget's going to look like. And so we came to an agreement with ASME that we'll wait and see what the climate looks like a year from now. So it's just a one-year contract.
So typically contracts are two or three?
Two or three years, but everything's just so uncertain. And they understood and, you know, our treasurer really felt she could not certify a master agreement going out two or three years because we're not even sure what our budget's going to look like next year. So they were very agreeable and so it's a one-year contract. And we will be back at the negotiating table this time next year.
All right. I would like to make a motion that we approve both master agreements for 3136 and 3136A for one year.
I'll second.
Any discussion? So, I mean, you know, this is, this is pretty fair and I would like to commend everybody that was part of the negotiating team on both sides for kind of seeing, you know, the realism of our current situation. And then finding, you know, the easiest way to kind of get this off the table, at least for the short term. I mean, this, this was the best case scenario. So I'm really happy on both sides. So the ASME side and then our negotiating side to come up with a solution here, I mean, in this climate.
We have a great staff and I think they understood our financial situation. So they were very agreeable. All right, now, number 4.02...
Hold on, we haven't passed it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm rushing ahead.
The other thing I want to comment on is because I have a family member that is a member of ASME, I will be abstaining from this vote. Any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Hatton?
Abstain.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rerica?
Yes.
All right, with that, the agreement passes?
And we will let our, the ASME representative and ASME president know, so thank you. All right, now I can move on to 4.02. This is 10 days for the two employees in the treasurer's office to work through July. It's a supplemental contract because typically they don't work in July and I think everyone does want to get paid, so we needed to add that in.
All right, so I would like to make a motion that we approve the supplemental contracts for the treasurer assistance listed.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Hatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rerica?
Yes.
All right, with that, that passes and we'll move on to agenda item number five, which is our policy committee report. Mrs. Cole?
Thank you, Mr. President. So item 5.01, this is our second reading of the 12 policies we've been discussing since the committee meeting in May, I believe. Do you want me to read the summary of each one again, Brandon, or just talk?
No, we've already had the one reading.
Okay, so we're good.
Has anybody received any comments about these policies?
No.
Since they've been up for review publicly?
Uh-uh.
No. So I think because we do these by consent agenda, if, to make it easier, if you just want to state, you know, as listed.
Okay. So this is the second reading of the 12 policies as listed that we've discussed in the past three meetings now. So do we, are we voting on those?
So you can make, since this is the second motion, you can make a motion to have the second reading and adopt.
Okay. But there's another, another item. We're doing them both together?
Uh.
They're both together, it looks like, on here.
Yes, they are both together.
Yeah.
But the other item, it's, it's not a second reading.
Right.
It's just.
Right. Okay. Okay, so the other item, item 5.02, this is a draft food service purchasing guideline, exhibit DJF-E. Mrs. Camp House went into this last Tuesday at the committee meeting. So this doesn't need two readings. It's not a policy. This is just a guideline. And this guideline further defines the procurement process and our board policy, which is needed for the cafe purchasing per federal guidelines. So can I get a motion to approve these two, or approve these two items?
Sure. So your motion is to have the second reading and adopt the listed policies?
Yep.
In our agenda, and then approve the guideline for the food service.
Food service, yes.
So there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on these policies and the guideline?
So I do have a question.
Okay.
I'm just trying to refresh my memory since I've been gone. Under the hazing and bullying policies, I'm not just, and correct me if I have, if I just, I'm not finding it, but I'm not finding anything that really stands up for victims' rights. It just says, you know, basically that there will be no bullying and no harassing intimidation. Those types of general things. A lot of these policies tend to come down in a no tolerance aspect, and that usually leaves a victim being punished in some way for finally defending themselves, even if they have taken every step, even if they have gone to a teacher, gone to a counselor, gone to their parent. If it finally comes down to a child harassing them physically and they try to defend themselves, oftentimes, they are receiving of punishment. So I want to make sure that in these policies, that there is some type of protection in place for students who have followed those steps and who have been attacked in some way, to make sure that they are not being unfairly punished for something that was not their Is there anything in our policy that protects our victim?
In the regulation, it cites that when hazing and bullying is based on race, color, national origin, sex, or disability, and the behavior creates a hostile environment, the hazing and bullying investigation is suspended while the applicable nondiscrimination grievous procedures are implemented.
Okay. But what if another student just hits another student? It doesn't have to be race or sexually oriented for another student to just be mean to someone.
But they call it out by everything.
But I'm saying, like, if it's not specifically, if it's just some kid walking down the hallway decides to punch another kid because they're having a bad day, and they defend themselves. It could be anything. But they defend themselves, and they get in trouble. They get suspended for fighting, even if they're defending themselves.
So that's part of the investigation. That's part of the conversation that occurs with the administrator.
Okay.
Who interviews both of those students and any other students who might have been around that, around that situation. So that's taken into consideration.
I have been reached out to by some parents who have had their children get in trouble from bullying situations where they have consistently said, "We tried telling the teacher. We tried reaching out, and, you know, my kid's still got in trouble or still received punishment." So I just want to make sure that that is being consistently implemented. Because even if it says that we're going to look at it fairly, some of these students are still being punished for fighting or for reacting. And I want to make sure that we are implementing this in an equitable way. So I don't know if it just needs to be the language to make sure that there is something in there for victims' rights, to make sure it specifically and explicitly says that the victims will be protected. Because I feel like that's a very important role for a school to fill. If we have students who do not feel safe coming to a teacher or coming to an authority figure in the building saying that they have been harassed or hurt or picked on in some way because they know that they're not going, it's not going to be dealt with, or it's just going to escalate under the table and that it's going to be ignored. So I don't feel that we are cultivating a place where our students feel safe enough to come to authority figures because they don't think that it's going to be taken seriously. And that needs to be something that we look at.
I think that's a different question, whether or not students may or may not feel safe coming to ask for help. That's, that's an important question, but it's different than what I was speaking to about the investigation. That's a, that's a different kind of question.
But I feel like it should fall under policy for victims' rights, making sure that we are cultivating a safe enough space where students feel that they can come out and say these things because our behavior is actually supporting what we're telling students. Come to a teacher, reach out, come to us, tell us when we have a problem. If our students feel that anytime they've done that in the past, it's been blown over, they're not going to feel safe enough to come forward. And sometimes, even when they have and they get in trouble, they still might end up with detention or suspension or some type of punishment. So they're like, well, what good does it do me? So I feel like in our policy, there should be something that specifically holds us accountable to making sure that our victims feel safe, feel heard, and feel respected when we tell them that we will be there to protect them and stand up for them if they think that they're not being heard when they do finally reach out. My next door neighbor has, has a kid who gets picked on sometimes, and, and I feel like if, if he can just get picked on because kids are walking down the street and saying stuff to him, who does he feel like he can talk to? And it's not going to be his teacher. It's not going to be his administrator. And I want to make sure that we are cultivating that space and encouraging that relationship. And I don't know necessarily how to do it, but I don't think that our policy supports victims' rights in the way that it's worded. I don't think it holds our staff accountable for reporting when they see instances of bullying and harassment between our students. They're just like, okay, just be quiet, don't bother them. That's not good enough. Don't bother them. Well, they're going to do it when you can't see them. So what are they doing beyond just telling them to sit on the other side of the room? Is there something in, in place that is going to hold our staff accountable for this process so that students feel heard when they actually report harassment?
So what does it look like in your mind?
Nope, no tolerance policies don't work. Punishing a victim just makes victims stay silent.
No, that's not the question that I asked, though.
This is step one.
I asked, you know, so, so, because you're talking about victims' rights.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And then, and then you're talking about, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't work if, you know, they're not going to go to the teacher, or they're not going to go to the administrator, and they're not going to tell them. So, in your mind, how does it work?
Well, part of this policy is how we're dealing with the student. This is how we're dealing with the student in terms of, if you harass another student, this will happen to you, you'll be in trouble, blah, blah, blah. That's what the policy basically states. It does nothing for, well, what about the teachers who they say, "I told Mrs. So-and-so," or "I told Mr. So-and-so" for the last few months that this guy was picking on me? And there's no accountability for that staff member for the reporting process? There's, there's a chunk of that puzzle missing. Kids don't just go from zero to knock you out from, from nothing. There's buildup. There is picking on. There is abuse. There is harassment that is taking place. And if we're not making sure that part of this policy recognizes that process.
But that's, that's part of the question I'm asking you is, so, so what, what does that look like? What does that accountability look like to you?
Part of it, I think, is going to be some training for our staff to make sure that they are recognizing and hearing students and not just blowing them off for kids being kids or boys being boys. That kind of thing just doesn't work. Making sure that there is a, a process for a teacher to report when they see something. And it's not just put off to the side just to avoid the issue. Because that's how the issues build.
Right. That's kind of what I'm getting at, is I think that language is.
I can read it. It says, "Administrators, teachers, and all other district employees are particularly alert to possible conditions, circumstances, or events that might include hazing, bullying, and/or dating violence. If any of the prohibited behaviors are planned or discovered, involved students are informed by the discovering district employee of the prohibition contained in this policy and are required to end all such activities immediately. All hazing, bullying, and/or dating violence incidents are reported immediately to the principal's designee, and appropriate discipline is administered." And it holds no one accountable to report that. It just says they shall report it. Who are they reporting it to? And if they fail to report it, what is going to happen to that staff member? When you have a student who says, "I've been telling Mrs. So-and-so for months that this has been going on, and all she did was move me across the room." So you want a consequence in here of? I would like to make sure that we are.
But that's not, that's not the role of, of these policies.
Yeah.
Is to affect the day-to-day. So, so the role of, of these policies is to provide a general umbrella framework from which the administration can then build the organizational structure.
So can there be structure in there that has teacher accountability if there are reports that are being made and not filed? If they're not being brought up the food chain?
So I, I think this gets into a much more complicated issue because if you're going to have those accountability issues, then you're going to run into the problem of the teacher, the NTA contract. So if you're going to provide some sort of, you know, accountability structure with that, you're going to have to have NTA input into that.
Okay.
And then that may end up being in the teacher handbook and may end up having to be negotiated into the professional staff contract.
I'm not against that.
Right. But it may not live here.
Okay. But that's what I'm asking.
Yes.
This is a point where I'm looking at this, and I'm just not seeing an accountability structure for the, for the superiors that students are supposed to reach out to, to follow these steps, to say, "I'm not breaking the rules. I'm being a good student. I'm still getting picked on," and to, for them to react and be punished, potentially. That investigation could find that a teacher isn't doing their end of the bargain. So I want to know what we have in place to make sure that teachers are being held accountable when they're like, "I've told them repeatedly I'm being harassed or being bullied in the classroom, and I'm not being heard." So I want to make sure that there is some sort of protection in there for students like that.
But, but that, that may not be in this policy because, because of other extenuating circumstances involving, you know, the, the public union contract.
And that's okay. I just want to know if it exists somewhere? Can it exist somewhere?
It's in the professional code of conduct for teachers, for Ohio educators.
So what is the process if we find out that a student has been talking to a teacher and the teacher hasn't really moved it up the food chain?
Just, so you really are talking about an HR issue and teacher discipline? And either suspending that teacher or firing that teacher because they didn't follow up?
There has to be accountability.
So I think the board president's correct. We would definitely have to negotiate that or sit down with the master agreement and do some kind of progressive discipline. So it is awkward to put it in a board policy, especially if that policy then conflicts with whatever suspension and or termination clauses they are in the master agreement. And so I definitely think we'd have to get our legal counsel involved in this because I think the wording on this policy comes directly from Ohio School Boards Association, where they've had their lawyers go through it. So I, I think we might be ill-advised as a board to change their legal language and attempt to discipline teachers in this policy.
Yeah.
This, this, this could be problematic.
That's fine. Like I said, I didn't think that it would necessarily fit here, but it gives me pause to say, where is it? If it's not here, then where is the other end of that accountability process? Because obviously, this is something that builds over time. There is existing extenuating circumstance when a child gets to the point where they're going to start physically, you know, hitting another child or harassing another child. This is, this is built in. It's systemic, and it's usually ongoing for longer periods of time. And if it is taking place consistently, it means that someone in authority is either ignoring it, letting it happen, pushing it aside, or not seeing it. And if they're not seeing it, why aren't they seeing it? So maybe it's a training issue. Maybe we need to make sure our teachers are trained to recognize these types of behaviors more readily. So that could be part of it. Do we train more? Is there a policy in place? Are there checks and balances in place? This is what I want to make sure we're doing.
Okay. So I, I think what we can do, so we can go ahead and vote on the second reading and the adoption of this policy as is. Even though we adopt this policy tonight, or not adopt it tonight. So if we don't adopt it tonight, the previous version remains in effect. So it's not like it goes away. If we adopt this policy tonight, it still leaves us the ability to go back and look at it again tomorrow. So these things are living documents. They can be changed at any point in time. So, so, you know, the work doesn't stop with the adoption of this policy. And, you know, if this is something that needs to be looked at on the administrative level to see about the accountability with the teacher side.
Exactly. Into professional code of conduct. I think it's more appropriate there.
Right.
Than in the policy.
Then we can have that discussion through that channel.
That's perfectly acceptable. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Good. Any other discussion about the policies?
Oh, just to go back to Amber's first point about when victims fight back and they also get punished, and not that that's in this policy. I just hope that's something that we think about at another meeting. Because I've also had several parents tell me, or, and I've seen, even when I was seven, I saw it. You know, if the kid fought back, they also got suspended. And it was, it was kind of heartbreaking to even have to watch.
Right.
It, the, the whole thing happen, that the person who stood up for themselves has to also receive punishment. So I hope we think about that one, too. Not that that's in this policy.
So I'd like to remind everyone here that there is a process of appeals. So, you know, if, if someone is going through that process and they feel like they didn't get the, the right judgment call, they can appeal. The first appeal is always to the building principal. And if it doesn't go there, then there's a chain of command. They can do another appeal to the superintendent. And then if they still, at that point, don't feel like they're getting, you know, the answer that they're looking for, there is, in our policy currently existing, the ability to appeal directly to the Board of Education, where we could hear that in an executive session, bring in whatever we, resources we need to bring in in order to make a determination and either, you know, agree with what the superintendent and everybody else recommends or come up with a different determination based on the evidence presented to us. So that there, there are those appeal processes in our policy currently existing. So I just wanted.
And I do get lots of calls.
I think a lot of people have operated on, well, they told me that they didn't have any choice and had to punish my kid, so I accepted it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, that, that is an option.
It's good to know, and I will tell people this, help them.
So, all right. Any other comments? All right. So just to reiterate, the motion on the floor is to have the second reading and adoption of the listed policies in our agenda, and then also to approve the guideline for the food service purchasing. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
All right, with that, those amendments to the policies are approved. The guideline is approved and we will move on. So there is no building and grounds committee report for this month. Is that correct? Nothing to report?
The only thing that I would like to report is the progress that is moving along very beautifully. I just checked out the bathrooms here in the high school. They're completely ripped out. I went in and checked out the new floors. Um, they're looking fantastic and they're starting to dismantle the things over at Sharpsburg. So construction is on track right now from, from the community standpoint to just watch this process grow this summer. So I, I know COVID has hit us hard, but construction, it's given us a little bit of, an opportunity to continue working in new ways that we didn't think we would have because of the extra time. So they're just doing what they're doing and I'm, I'm very happy to see this progress moving forward.
You, you are right. Our architect has promised us by August 24th, the classrooms will be ready to go at the start of school.
That's awesome.
Uh, we'll move on to item number seven in our agenda, which is the finance committee report. Mrs. Camp House?
Thank you, Mr. President. Financial reports for May are attached for your review and approval tonight. In addition, the Sharpsburg and View Change order spreadsheets are included. Next month, we'll have an additional one and we'll have the high school too. 7.02 appropriation resolution. This is the routine approval of our budget for the current year. 7.03 temporary appropriation resolution. This resolution approves the budget for next year. 7.04 county auditor spreadsheet. This document will be sent to the county auditor for approval and regulation. It becomes our final certificate of estimated resources and final appropriations. 7.05, the final step in our high school remodeling for Phase 1, the notice of commencement and Graybach contract. 7.06 Peterman bus contract, a new contract for next year for transportation. 7.07 Hartspring service contract. This contract is for next year's special education student placement. 7.08 Hamilton County ESC service contract for next year. 7.09 Kling, Kling, Klinger's survey agreement for Williams Elementary. This land survey is necessary to move forward with the construction project planning for Williams. 7.10 CARES Act funding. We've applied for the CARES Act funding grant. Early allocations have us at $932,762.47. We're approving the grant, creating the fund, and budgeting to spend it starting next year. 7.11 transfers and advances. We have a few transfers for minor amounts and a transfer to the severance fund for future severance needs. Our advances are up to $225,000 to the cafeteria fund and up to $25,000 for the athletic fund. As you can imagine, the pandemic closure of schools has devastated our cafeteria financials and they need help getting through this. We do hope that we can use some of our CARES funding to help the cafeteria also instead of using the general fund. 7.12 Elavir architect contract. This contract with Elavir Architects will, um, develop the plans to remodel the high school front area to better serve as a student-based health center. Again, like we mentioned before, funding for the health center remodeling will come from the Student Wellness State Grant. 7.13 donations, some nice donations, $500 from Lifetime Foundation to our cafeteria and $150 from the Kelly family to Avenue's for Success. Scarlet and Gray has donated $2,648 in like services as they have donated time to the district at no cost for summer work. Finally, 7.14 pay transportation at 50%. As you remember, in May, we approved a pandemic resolution to allow me to pay Peterman 50% of their days under pandemic billing. This will extend that so that we can pay the other remaining vendors along the same terms, very small, uh, small amounts of money and just a few vendors. And that's all I have for finance.
Any questions on that?
So I would like to make a motion that we approve 7.01 through our consent agenda all the way to 7.14.
I'll second.
Any discussion? So I just want to highlight in here real quick, uh, because we are approving a lot. So the, the Graybach, um, contract that we're approving is for the work that's already happening here in the high school. And, and so it's important that, that that can improve so, so we can continue that work. I also want to highlight, so the 7.10, so the CARES Act funding, because they have us at $932,762.47, so that's not a free-for-all for us. Right, so there are heavy stipulations with that money. And basically, you know, the overall guiding principle is, is that money is to be spent on anything directly related to the current pandemic. Now, I think there is some creativity as to what we could designate as being related to the pandemic. And I completely agree that the transfer of the $225,000 to the cafeteria fund because of all the meals that we have provided for an extended period of time and over the summer directly apply for that. So, you know, yeah, we're going to transfer some money, but my hope is, is that we can recoup that from, from the CARES funding.
That's correct. And it is as an advance, which means that we repay to the general fund. And at that time, we can use the CARES funding to...
Right.
To take care of that whole...
Is that something that we use to buy the thermometers?
Yes, yes. Right now, what I, what we've done is ordered them out of the general fund, but that's what Julie's saying. Now that we've accepted this grant, we can recode them because...
They can refund us that money.
Exactly. Because all that we, you know...
That's exciting that we were like, okay, these thermometers are very expensive, but since we're getting this and it's for that, we can buy these thermometers for everybody to help keep us safe.
And all the hand sanitizer and the kiosks. There's just all kinds of supplies. We've had to purchase gloves.
Yes.
So, and I think even any additional costs that our cleaning service provider directly due to the pandemic, right? So because we have a locked-in contract with them, so anything above and beyond that, I think, could be covered through, through this. So it doesn't hit our general fund. So there, there are ways we can spend this money. This money will not go to waste.
It's just, we put in our orders early just because everyone's going to be ordering. A lot of this is coming, you know, maybe from out of the country. You're trying to buy American, but sometimes you never know where it's coming from.
We want to make sure we get our thermometers.
Exactly, yes. At this point, you don't want to wait three months to get your thermometers. You need them here in August.
The day that the governor announces closing schools, we set up separate funds, separate counts in the general fund so that we could track these costs more easily. So it's made it, because we were prepared, it's made it a little easier to now say, this is what we need to use the CARES funding for.
And, and that's fantastic. I mean, that's the type of forward thinking that, you know, lets a district operate like a well-oiled machine. Right, so fantastic. All right, any other comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes. I thought she said Raraka when she said Rayburn.
All right, next item on our agenda is, um, section eight, which is public comment.
Guess what? I got one.
So you have a public comment?
It's a whole big letter, yes.
Well, Brandon has to read the little thing first.
Okay, go ahead.
Since you're going to do a thing.
Yeah, so, so you're, so did they send you something to read on their behalf?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Did, did they tell you who they were and where they lived?
Uh, yeah, here's his name and I know where he lives.
Okay. Uh, if you just know the street, don't know the exact house, I think that'll be okay.
I do.
All right. Um, so I just have to read this just so that... "To further improve the communication between the community and the board, time shall be allocated at each regular or special board meeting to hear the public or representatives of school-related organizations. Public participation at committee meetings is limited to those invited to speak on specific issues. Each person addressing the board should fill out a form listing name, address, and the agenda or non-agenda item and then hand it in. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. No more than 15 minutes will be devoted to any one topic unless a majority of the board votes to continue the discussion. Speakers may offer objective criticism of school operations as concerns them. However, the board will not hear personnel complaints of school personnel or complaints against any person connected with the district. Those concerns and comments about individuals should be brought to the attention of the administration. And this was approved January 17th of 2019." So with that, the floor is yours.
Okay, this, uh, letter is from Andrew Clark. As you know, has been a, uh, city council person for us. Is not right now, but has been. And, uh, he lives on Lafayette, uh, behind Kroger.
Okay.
Okay. Dear Norwood, Norwood School Board, first, I want to thank each of you for your service to our kids, our schools, and our community. I appreciate all you do. You might not be able to hear me very well. To make Norwood and our schools a better place, and I appreciate your leadership during this crazy time, I pray you and your family are staying healthy and happy. Second, I want to make a suggestion. If this is something that isn't being done already, in addition to all the new guidelines, rules, and mandates that you will be sending out to parents and students before returning to school this fall, I would love to see you encourage the importance of eating healthy, nutritious foods, proper hydration, getting quality restful sleep, and daily activity exercise. Many do not realize the positive impact these things have on our immune systems. This may seem like a simple or trivial thing, but as we navigate this time of masks and social distancing, strong immune systems are really our best and most important defense against coronavirus or any other virus. I will admit, I'm not an expert in this field, but I have seen through my own experience what a diet full of healthy nutritious foods, proper sleep, drinking lots of water, and exercise can do to improve one's health and promote wellness. I went from being sick all the time to one cold in two years. I'm sure the Norwood Health Department, our school's food service, or perhaps our health education instructors would have informational pieces readily available to include in the information distributed. I also want to share my appreciation for our schools and food service who have provided healthy nutritious meals for our kids well before, during, and after the stay-at-home order. We cannot put a price on good health, and our school system's food service has gone above and beyond to ensure that our kids do not go hungry and eat well. Last, I just want to say that my concern is the health and well-being of all. I think everyone has been doing their absolute best during unprecedented times, but in the news and press conferences I have watched, it seems the items I have mentioned are being left out. These are powerful tools that everyone should have at their disposal in our fight against coronavirus. Anything we can do to ensure that our kids and parents are aware of these things is time and effort well spent. I appreciate all of you are doing to ensure the safety and well-being of our students and communities. Stay well. Andy Clark, Norwood class of 2004.
Well, that was wonderfully stated by Mr. Clark. I am so glad that, uh, that he sent that to you to show us. Totally agree that, uh, that, you know, healthy food choices and just a, a good, healthy outlook in general is, is the best way to boost your immune system. Completely agree.
All right.
Thanks, Andy.
All right, no other, um, to address the board? So we will move on to our report section. So item number 9.01, which is board announcements. Does anybody have any board announcements?
I do.
Go for it.
Um, Alice and I had a committee meeting this week and we met with a couple of teachers, uh, or former teachers, parents in the community to kind of get their input. I know Corona kind of hit us hard when we had started planning on doing, um, curriculum roundtables and, you know, meeting with parents and having these like face-to-face things, and all of it got put on hold. So we were able for the first time in months to actually get together with some parents and, and start rehashing that conversation to say like, okay, if we, if we had curriculum meetings, what could it look like? And, and how would you like to be involved, uh, going forward? And I think some of our parents are ready to, to do that again. So I think it would be a great time to re-look at that schedule of, of hosting a curriculum meetup with some parent input. I know, I think we have, uh, social studies coming up for next year, so that could be a great, uh, pushing off point. And we also talked about, you know, equity in curriculum and what they might want to see in that. So I think it'd be a really good opportunity to start a conversation with our parents and community members. And it was just a great meetup to really just see people again.
They had so many ideas. It was, I was trying to write.
Yeah, so we, it was just a really good time. We had a very successful meeting and, yeah, so we just wanted to, we're excited to move forward and, and get that conversation rolling. I talked to Mary this week too about an idea to, um, take copies of our curriculum for each grade level and utilize the, you know, those bookshelves in the office that we usually meet at over at the board office. Use some of those bookshelves to put, you know, these are the books for grade level one, two, three, et cetera. So if a parent has questions about their curriculum, they could just come into the board office and sit down at a table and, you know, grab a book off the shelf and, and look through it at any time. So it would be really accessible and easy to do. We wouldn't have to try to get ahold of a teacher and hope that we could get a copy of the book. It would just, we would have an extra copy right there for them anytime they wanted to come in. And I thought that was a really good idea that Mary had. So, you know, that could be something going forward, but, yeah, that was, that's about it. We just, we just had our, had our first little committee meeting and it was good. We went to chicken salad chick and it was delicious.
And we were very far apart.
We, we separated. We took off a whole corner. Social distanced.
We were far apart, yes.
All right. Any other board announcements?
I have a question. So at the conclusion of the last committee meeting, Amber, you announced that July 25th was now a no-go for prom. Could you please update us?
Thank you.
Because that's like a month from today.
I haven't received the update, but we aren't going to update until July 1st. They were waiting until that date to see if the governor came out with new stipulations as of July. So we're holding until July 1st. So as soon as I have an update for you guys, I will definitely message you. But we were waiting to see if that first week of July, if the governor came out with anything different. But we're, we were looking at the 31st instead of the 25th.
And I, well, I have a couple of things. So first of all, you said the 25th was a conflict for Coney.
Correct. But the gentleman who booked it was one of the, the managing staff. And the people who actually scheduled the events were on hiatus. When she came back into the office, she's like, no, 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 no. I have, I have a thing that day.
Okay.
He didn't know and it was, he was like, I am so sorry. We already had a thing booked and I will, you know, make sure we can get you anything else you need on these dates. And so I had talked to the coordinator. She said she was going to reach out to Ms. Akers and handle that with the people who are in charge of the planning committee and, like, the student advisors and things like that. So she's going to handle that, but we were in, uh, holding pattern until at least July 1st to make that decision.
Well, July 31st, I said this in the committee meeting, but I don't think anybody heard me. July 31st is the senior picnic.
They were going to discuss swapping.
They were going to discuss that, okay, very good.
That was on the table to swap those two dates. So that way, the kids had already planned for that day and that day. We'll just switch which event is happening which day.
So that was on the table, um, but again, it's... That makes total sense.
Till we have it swapped. Yes, to just switch those dates so kids already had it on their sca, on their schedule to be available.
So is it safe to say right now juniors and seniors listening should plan, not plan on July 25th for prom? They should think about...
Don't plan on the 25th for prom, but tentatively that will be the new date for the picnic. If, you know, if we are able to flip-flop it. I think she was also going to put it out to seniors if they wanted to do the, uh, the picnic, you know, early afternoon and just make it a whole senior day. You know, go to that in the afternoon, leave, go get your hair done, come back and do the thing. That was on the table, but that was not the preference, it seemed, from the people she spoke with.
Yeah, a lot of people take most of the day to prepare.
Right, I know. Trust me, I know. I went to prom. But that was one option and they were going to look at a couple other dates that Coney had offered and, and weigh their options and get back to us as soon as we have new instruction from the governor a little bit closer to. But so far, we're planning on flip-flopping the dates. That seemed to be the most popular...
That makes sense. I mean, that makes sense.
It just makes the most sense, yeah, because they've already...
That makes sense, but I was just concerned and I'm like, well, I thought we had the date, so if Coney now has a conflict, what's to say Coney's not going to have a conflict the next date that we pick? That was my concern.
The only reason he had the conflict was because he didn't have the master counter from the, from the other staff member. And he got us, as soon as he found out about it, he called right away. It happened last week. He, he called me immediately. I spoke to her five minutes after that phone call and, and got that ball rolling. So as soon as, as soon as we possibly can, we will update you on the date.
Thank you.
Keep an eye on the website.
Is that it? All right, superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, President Atwood. We are continuing to plan the start of school. We have a team of, gosh, it's up to about 50 people now, but it's six or seven people from each building because we want input from all five school buildings, really to make sure we get off to the right start. We will be, uh, doing a second survey or at least contacting parents, trying to determine if they want the online program and how many children want to be here in person. So that'll have to come out in July. We, um, have been busy, um, again, spending money out of the CARES Act in addition to the thermometers and the gloves. We've ordered some Plexiglas shields because we have speech therapists who have to work, you know, very close to a child saying their sounds. So we've put up those kind of barriers. We have ordered face shields in case the masks are so restrictive that if you want to see a child, how are they, you know, moving their lips in terms of making the sounds? A face shield's certainly a lot better than a face mask. We're ordering the, um, oh, you've seen them on the floors in lots of stores, the six-foot spacing so to help children line up. We want just the, the safest school startup as possible. So we're ordering all the appropriate items plus all the cleaning supplies. Um, I was really delighted on the survey to hear that parents realize that recess is important, getting children outside. We will simply wash their hands when they come back in, but letting them get... We will simply wash their hands when they come back in, but letting them get outside and out of the classrooms, I think, will be very, very valuable. So we really are looking at in great detail in terms of what parents want on that survey. And the good news is, the classrooms will be ready. Now, here in the construction in the high school, really, this is a two-year project that they're trying to do in the summers, which is why, once school starts, our architects said they're going to switch to evenings and weekend work, because there's really no place to move an entire high school. So that's why it's being spread over two summers and on weekends. They will be in here hand-scraping the gym ceiling, so we will have to move out of the gym for our July meetings and into the cafeteria, because my understanding is they're scraping the cafeteria as we speak, so we'll be able to flip-flop. So July meetings in our cafeteria instead of our gym.
No more fuzz falling on the floor.
Yes, none of the fuzz, the fluffy fuzz coming down on us anymore. So, but one item, though, that's not so great, we had some hail damage recently. There was a hailstorm on the roof because we noticed we had a leak here at the high school. And as we called our insurance company and we looked at it, I've been told our roof is 18 years old, and I believe it has a 20-year warranty, so it's very near the end of its useful life. So we're probably going to have to look at a new roof for the high school as part of this construction. So I just wanted to make people aware of that, and a new roof is very, very pricey for a high school of this size.
Pace contract.
But you said it's under warranty?
Not, well, not anymore, not when it's 18 years old and depreciated.
From storm damage.
That's what they were saying. It really needs to be replaced, because no amount of repair is going to really help. But that's what brought this to light when we were following up on hail damage.
Does the hail damage allow us to file an insurance claim?
Yes, and that's when we had to find out how long our warranty, that's when we investigated how old the roof is. So they may help us with the patch, where the leak is, but in terms of replacing the old roof, you're going to get very little money when it's already 18 years old. You know, they're, they're not going to buy a new roof for a quarter of a million dollars for us, so we're going to have to work through that.
I think there are ways we can manage this that minimize the cost of the district.
While it's been 18 years old, it was in our plans anyway to replace it, which is now, it's going to be sooner than later.
Right.
But because of the cost of it, it will have to be bid out, so we will probably combine it with Williams for the next phase of the high school.
Okay.
To do it probably through bidding.
Okay. Awesome. Next report is the Great Oaks report. Mrs. Fowler?
All right. So we've had some interesting things going on at the Oaks. We had to move back some of our summer workshops for our PPE, for our teachers. They have been pushed back to October with follow-ups in February. Our ACTE events for the fall are still scheduled to happen this year. We have one trainer coming up in Columbus and one that's going to be down in Nashville as well, and those are still going to be taking place. We've also been looking for the same types of adjustments that you guys have, have been doing, and every district everywhere has been doing for curriculum and for all of our students, for online options and things like that, which is much harder to do with the physical nature of what, what we do at Oaks. We did have a really cool thing happen, though, just like we have a Teacher of the Year here, we have an ACTE Teacher of the Year that works for the Great, for the Great Oaks program. Her name's Rebecca McCowen, and she was named the Ohio ACTE Teacher of the Year. She currently works at one of our satellite options over at Princeton High School. So big congratulations to her. I think it's awesome that we have a Teacher of the Year and an Oaks Teacher of the Year. And we also have, we have still been doing, from our online students, a student spotlight, so it's kind of like how we do the, this Rising Star Awards. And we had two students this month from Norwood who were, who were recipients of that award. And the students' names are Ivan Carballo and Quentin Hughes. And one of them, excuse me, Quentin, Quentin is a part of the Web Application and Game Development Program, and Ivan is a part of the Exercise Science and Sports Medicines Program. So they both received that award, so I'm really proud of our Norwood students really doing well and being honored through, through online learning and making those adjustments. And then next week, we have a discussion finally on the table to create an equity committee and form that committee and be active in it. So we're going to make some progress next week and hopefully find out who's going to be on that and how the appointments are going to go. So I'll be sure to let you guys know how that process is going. And that's all for my Great Oaks report.
Fantastic. Next on the agenda is the Norwood Community Television Board Report, and that's my report. We have not officially met since the pandemic has started, but I just want to thank NCT for all of the work that they've done in getting things like this set up, not only for our meetings, but for city meetings as well. They do a fantastic job. Bless you. They do a fantastic job of making sure that, that we are visible to the public, and I just want to commend their service. They're some of the hardest-working people that I know. And that is all I have for my report. So next is 9.05, the OSBA Legislative Liaison Report with Ms. Raver.
Okay, so House Bill 164 was signed by Governor DeWine on the 19th of June. It includes emergency provisions that address the challenges facing school districts in the 2020-21 school year. It discusses funding, graduation, the third-grade reading guarantee. This particular thing was sort of interesting to me and something I didn't know before, that they're not raising the promotion score for next year.
Right.
They're leaving it at the 219-220 promotion score, and that they normally raise that score every year. And so each year, it's harder and harder for our kids to pass.
That only works for so long.
Right?
I appreciate you pointing that out. Yes, so it looks like you're not improving when you really are, and if you miss it, it looks like you're doing worse where you really aren't. You're doing the same as you did the previous year, except they changed the cut score. Thank you for pointing that out.
And it's a new group of kids.
Yes.
It's not like you're, you're going to take this group of kids and raise them here, okay? Here's the next group of kids, and we have to raise them here, and here's the next group of kids, and they have to be... That's unsustainable. That just makes me angry.
Thank you for pointing that out.
So another reason why we need to stick it to these tuss. Okay, so also, there'll be some services to special needs students in there, and some grade band flexibility, which I thought was interesting, too, which is saying that we can move our teachers around to different positions easier. But, all that said, tomorrow, there will be a webinar explaining all this stuff, so if there's anything that was of interest to us that I missed from trying to read all their legislation writing, they will explain that tomorrow to me in a webinar, which I will be attending at Tentacle tomorrow on my computer.
Wonderful, because you're right, there was an awful lot in that, in that House Bill.
Right? I was like, and I have to find all the things that pertain to us, and it was a little crazy.
And one thing we do need to bring up in July, we'll have to put together a resolution for your approval on remote learning. Since we are going to have a virtual option, we have to have board approval. The good news is, as long as our board approves it, ODE doesn't have a say, they just have to receive a copy of it. So that's interesting, because normally ODE has to approve things, but as long as our local board approves it, we just send a copy. So we will put together a resolution for your approval in July.
Awesome. That sounds wonderful. I'm smiling, I don't know if you can...
Smile with your eyes. All right, is that anything else?
That's all I have for now, until I do this webinar tomorrow and find out if there's anything that I missed.
Okay. And the last report, but not the least, report, 9.06, Avenues for Success. Mrs. Rayburn?
Thank you. So first of all, Avenues is going to run a virtual summer blast camp that's going to run from July 6th through 31st, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. It's going to be completely virtual, so there are eight different partners involved, and each of those groups are going to produce 12 videos, so that's a lot of content. And there will be like a daily meet-in on each of those that's done via Google Meet that will be facilitated by a school aid person. So that will go on, you know, so there will be a meet-in, a meetup, and then students can use the videos and stuff to do all sorts of things. In addition to that, on Saturday, July 25th, there will be a supply pickup. This is in lieu of the normal, you know, bounce back to school, that sort of thing, which obviously isn't very conducive to social distancing. So instead, we are going to have, still have the supplies to be picked up. It will actually be a drive-through circus slash supply pickup, so it will be split up. It'll be from 11 to 3:00. Each elementary school will have like a one-hour time allotted, so that we're not overwhelmed with everybody coming in all at once. And then there will be one hour for the middle school and high school together. And that will be in the parking lot of the Old Kroger? I don't even know what to call that. Near the Centos, like all that, that big parking lot near Xavier.
Northern Plaza, isn't it? Is it Northern Plaza?
Northern Plaza.
Is that what it's called?
By the Volkswagen dealership.
Yes.
Northern Plaza.
What day did you say?
July 25th.
The Old Prom Day.
Yes.
Now senior picnic.
That's it, that's all I have.
Hopefully, Senior Picnic Day.
All right. Well, I don't think it is going to be Senior Picnic Day, just because I don't think the advisor is available that day, so I just...
Don't get excited, everybody.
I know that they're adjusting dates.
Don't leave what I said.
Yeah, dates are being adjusted.
Yeah.
All right, so with the end of those reports, we're going to move on to meeting notification. And so future meetings, we discussed this at the last committee meeting, you know, summers are kind of tough with vacations and schedules and all that. So at the committee meeting, we discussed having our next committee meeting on Tuesday, July 7th. I know it says the gymnasium, but more than likely, we'll be in the cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
And then our regular board meeting on July 23rd in the cafeteria. I know it says the gymnasium on our agenda. We did this to accommodate more people being able to attend. We, and I just want to make sure everybody understands that at the committee meeting, we may not have everything available for us to be prepared for the board meetings. There may be items pop up on the board agenda that we didn't talk about at the committee meeting, and I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with that, because I know it's important that we discuss our work at the committee meeting. But just with the timing of the committee meeting being early in the cycle, that may be difficult. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve those future meeting dates.
My second.[1711.51]